You guys are honored.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. We'll open the meeting. Can we stand for our pledge?
My close allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, good, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to do our special presentations before we open up the public comments this evening. From Ulster Voces, Dr. Shanker is here to give us some insight on a proposal, a potential opportunity of leasing the former IBM complex in Kingston.
Great, thank you so much. I'm going to give you this here. And I am a little under the weather, no RSV, no COVID, but I'm not shaking hands. Nice to see everybody. And so let me just walk you through real quickly what's in here. You've got a couple of things. One is you've got a one sheet, which is a basic overview of really why we're looking for lease space, the opportunity. And then you have a Q and A, which is lots of questions with answers, things that are talking about, you know, when you lease a space and it's not a regular school, do you work with SCD? What about things that are proximate to other businesses? How does that impact students, et cetera, et cetera? So that's in there. You have a five-year financial outlook for Kingston, I'm sorry, for Highland. Kingston was last week. And then you have a slide deck. The slide deck that you have in there has more slides than I have up in here. Okay, so I'm really just going to hit some of the highlights here, or we'll be here much longer than you all want to. And as I said, for last week, last week to Kingston, as I'll say to you, as we move forward, if there are updates on the process, happy to come back, happy to give that information and partner with Joel, et cetera. Really, my goal tonight is to talk about a lease that we intend to bring to the Voces Board in March or April. And that's leases we bring to the Voces Board. The Voces Board votes on leases. So when we opened that in Divine, we had a lease there, Mount Marion, we had a lease there. We didn't come here to share. But this is going to get some more press around it. And so really, in the spirit of transparency, I want to just talk about where we're at and this opportunity so that you all are informed. Again, my hope here with I Park 87 is, I really believe this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity where we have significant space constraints going on, both on special ed and in our career and technical programs. And so we need to be leasing. And this particular opportunity is pretty special in terms of what it'll offer for all of our shared students at Ulster Voces and beyond. So really, in the kind of lowest level, simplest form, there's two parts. One is to relocate our current CTC to a turnkey state-of-the-art lease space at I Park 87. So that's one part. And the second is to repurpose our existing career and technical education center to a middle high school special ed campus. And I'll take you through a little bit about kind of why we need to be looking at space and as we look at the next one, three, and five years, where the concerns lie. So essentially, our current CTC site, it's an old shirt factory. It was designed for approximately 900 students. 450 in the AM and 450 in the PM. We offer both sessions. We currently have about 1,200 students enrolled. Average class size and recommended class size for career and technical education. So we're talking about a teacher that has students on welding machines or in the auto shop or in a cosmetology lab and/or manufacturing working machines is about 20. When we look around the state at the recommended kind of class sizes for those lab environments, right now, we're pushing 30 in our spaces. And on top of that, many of our students don't get their first choices. And so we know, as an extension to your program, you have a student who is a sophomore. They're thinking about how they want to complement and complete their high school education here at Highland. And they get excited because they're going to be able to finish their two years and they're going to come up, we're going to do half, you know, half a day of programming for two years in criminal justice or culinary. And we say, sorry, you have to give your second choice. A second choice for career and technical education doesn't equal engagement. And so we need to be looking at how students are getting their first choices and so that these spaces can do what they need to do.
You just hit okay, yeah.
When you go back to 2018, 25, about 26%, 830 of the juniors and seniors in the county, there were approximately 3,200 juniors and seniors, so about 830 attended career and technical education. Today, 38% or 1,200 of the 3,083 juniors are enrolled in career and technical education. We're not alone in this. This is happening across the four counties and across the state. Even with schools with declining enrollment, career and technical education enrollments are going up. And that's a whole other separate dialogue about what's happening in schools that are causing students to want to look. That's not my presentation. That's not tonight.
These technical jobs, you know, everybody understands $40 an hour or higher. I mean, these skilled folks are really pulling it in. There's a big demand.
And again, you know, there is, you know, when we begin to look at like, what is college and who goes to college? And even for jobs that typically folks would have went to college for, it's a changing landscape. Is a college degree going to be required for the future of work? You know, there are certain pathways, yes, but these are real conversations that as a state, we need to be happy. On the other side, so that's career and tech, let me just flip over to our special ed side. We have five special education programs or communities. Those communities are tied into the IEPs in which those students have. And so management needs students. I don't like that language, but that's what they're referred to. Students with autism, Asperger's, students with need for psychiatric and more social emotional regulation. Those are nearly at capacity. The need for short-term and long-term therapeutic programs, those are our TTP and LTTP programs. Those are programs where someone has a significant life event. They need to, you know, either hospitalization or step down. They come to us for five or six weeks. And then we help transition them back to either their high school, middle school, elementary, or into another program if another program is kind of being looked at. And that's growing. That's not going away. And then we have a significant amount of students who we transport out of the county. Currently, about $7 million in tuitions are exported out of this county to other Voces programs, Orange, Ulster, Duchess, Sullivan, and even further behind or beyond that. And there's a lot of reasons behind that. Some of it is we don't have the program, some of it is we're at capacity, or sometimes it's not a program match. Again, there is other larger special ed classification conversations that need to be happening. This isn't necessarily the solve for those issues. When we know that residential programs are closing and there's no room in there, when we know that the day treatment programs are closing, there's none there, it begins to squeeze on Voces placements. And again, that's not just an Ulster issue. That's across the state. 2018, we had one building, Port Ewan. That was our special ed center. It's essentially an upper, middle, high school program. We had about 117, 120 students in 18 and were projected to close this year at 300. We've added three buildings or two buildings outside of Port Ewan. So we leased the Anna Divine School from Kingston and we leased Mount Marion from Sawgerties. And so essentially, Anna Divine is lower and upper elementary. Mount Marion is kind of upper elementary and the middle. And then right now, Port Ewan is middle high school. This is where it gets really, really concerning for being able to provide extensions to your programs here in Highland and around the county. I'll just add before this, there are eight component districts which we serve here, but our special ed programming serves 26 school districts. So, and again, we're not unique. When we open a program, our special ed leadership team works with your assistant superintendent's PPS to ensure, okay, here's who you have. Let's get them placed first. But again, because of that complexity of problem and around the four counties, we've got students who may have been in Sullivan. It didn't work out. They're trying us and vice versa. That kind of happens. So here's our current status. Here's our Anna Divine building. Here's our Mount Marion building. And here is our Port Ewan building. This is actually, this was a week and a half ago, this chart was put together. It's changed. Special ed enrollments happen on a rolling basis. Anna Divine is essentially full. Mount Marion, which we opened this year, is at 62% and our Port Ewan facility at 91%. As you begin to project out over the next five years, when we look at the number of referrals that districts give us, those are our intakes, and the number of those that we accept, and we look at that, the past kind of look back of three to five years, that we get an average number of referrals and intakes. When we project that same average out over the next two, three, four, five years, you can see our three buildings are at nearly 200% occupied, right? That doesn't work. This conversation in '26 and '27 with PPS in our current configuration looks like, no, we can't take any students. What's also happened is prior to the three buildings, we didn't have a feeder. So most of our elementary students went out. We also did see classifications coming in with little students and with complex diagnosis that we've been seeing over the last two, three, four years. So the amount of K1, 2 students with significant needs exponentially increasing. Again, there's some large conversations that we need to happen as a state, but we also have to solve for here in Ulster County. And so now we've got an elementary school Anna Divine that's full, that's going to age up into Mount Marion, that's going to age up into a middle high school. We can't fit that. We never had those two feeder programs coming in. So here is the solution. Our current CTC building, 60,000 square feet of classroom and lab space. It's 90,000 square feet total. It was a shirt factory, so it wasn't built to be a school. There's a lot of wasted space to create a career and technical center. The new I Park space would be 90,000 square feet of classroom and lab space and classroom and lab space that's designed for this. So the utilization of the space would be more appropriate. We're projecting a capacity of 1,800 students there. Could hold up to 1,800 students. Our three sites, current enrollment, 250 with a capacity of about 300. If we created the middle high school campus in Port Ewan, much like Orange Ulster, they took over the hospital, they've got that campus that they're able to now serve kind of that multiple populations projected that we could hold up to 570 students there. So that's the solution. I believe the next slide is a video, which allows me to take a quick drink. This is the basic, high-level overview of the I Park side. Okay, so this will just give you an idea of what that project entails.
It's a download, Joel. That's not going to play.
I think if I click it, it'll open the other one and then I won't be able to...
Located in the heart of Ulster County, the former home and campus of IBM is being repurposed as an engine for economic development. Acquired by National Resources and now going by the name of I Park 87, this impressive facility will soon be home to a number of innovative Ulster County companies. In order to meet the demand for a skilled workforce, I Park 87 and Voces are working towards developing the next generation of training centers by attracting specific companies to live on site. Companies in the industries of automotive technology, battery storage, energy transition, manufacturing, construction, food and beverage, catering, dairy, data and fiber, and others. The goal of this partnership is to cultivate both a trained workforce as well as a multitude of opportunities for Ulster County residents. This educational facility will be located in the heart of I Park 87 and will provide training specific to these companies. Voces is looking to take approximately 100,000 square feet in order to facilitate this wide array of offerings and hands-on training for students. The goal is to help these individuals acquire the right skills to obtain the jobs that are happening right here in Ulster County. Most importantly, the companies themselves will have a hand in the curriculum, which will cultivate employer-employee relationships from the very beginning while allowing students to progress seamlessly through training programs and immediately start jobs upon completion.
Ulster Voces at I Park 87 is an amazing and exciting, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. It's really about all of our students in Ulster County deserving a viable pathway, access and equity to be able to be the designers of their future.
Over one-third of all juniors and seniors in Ulster County go through the Voces program. And this will be exactly the type of facility these students need and deserve. The facilities offered here will be state-of-the-art training centers that will provide the real skills needed for today's jobs. I Park 87 is working closely with Voces to provide a turnkey operation so that they can hit the ground running. There has been great support from the private sector, the county, and the state in order to make this succeed. Be part of it.
So this conversation started several years ago and didn't move very far. People weren't opposed to the vision of that, but the economics didn't work. And when I had the opportunity to take over as district superintendent this last, about a year ago, I re-engaged conversations and a little bit of a different kind of negotiation approach, talking about the value of Voces as the engine of this, as the heart of this particular project. And a couple of things happened. One was the initial investment to repurpose the property, which would have been the burden of Voces and in turn the districts. That was a deal breaker. The economics didn't work. National Resources, who owns it, has agreed to fund the $10 million build-out for the project. There is also a restored New York grant. It isn't for this particular project, but there's application on the campus. A couple of other exciting pieces about this is really the proximity and who it's going to bring together. I've been passionate about workforce and economic development in this county for a decade and feel like there's been a miss. We've got wonderful people doing wonderful things, but structurally, it's not working. We're not pulling in the same direction, right? And so even in the last year, I've been to six different economic workforce development meetings across the county, all with different people, all trying to do really cool things. They're working really hard, low output, all right? And I believe that the conversation has to change. It has to center the 20,000 students and their families in Ulster County as the roots of the economy. And then all of those other pieces are just as critical. Adult ed, two-year SUNY credential programs, direct internships and apprenticeships, four-year college, et cetera. But without that foundation, we'll still be talking about high school for those who can and technical pathways for those who can't. And that just isn't the case anymore. There are a lot of different pathways to be able to be successful in college and/or career or military, what have you. And so this hub outside of our school will bring the county economic and workforce development offices from Ulster County centered there. It'll bring SUNY Ulsters Innovation and Economic Development Offices there. And it'll bring SUNY New Pulse, their innovation offices there, housed there. And so all of a sudden, we will now have these entities, which are really charged with workforce development, in the same room, at the same table, talking about the same thing and pulling in the same direction. And I believe it's critical. The other piece is really, it's not about a Voces thing, but inherent in who we are is collaboration and coordination. That's what we do. Our job is to make it easy for school districts to access X. And so school districts aren't built and structured to be able to access small to mid-sized businesses in the Hudson Valley. It's, you know, something else that's on a guidance counselor's plate to try to find an internship, you know, to coordinate that. And conversely, on the other side, our business and industry folks, they don't know how to navigate, and they're not staffed to navigate eight different school districts. And so we could become this hub really for external experiences. And that's, again, in our nature to build these shared services so that if there's a Highland student who wants to access an internship, it wouldn't take away a guidance council. But the guidance council would just have access to this hub to say, I've got a so-and-so who's a sophomore, they're not a career in tech student, and we want to get them placed in here. What are my options? Here it is, right? Single-point entry from both sides, making it seamless for them to access that. So here are the financials. There is, and when I get to the timeline, you'll see. There's a two-year window. The two-year window started in September, but it allows for two budget cycles to plan for this. Another component inherent in this lease is this two-year no-pay. So it gives this year and next year to kind of step into this. When you look at, let me see what it is. Five-year projection, we've got an annual estimated 2% annual increase on that. This is Highland's cost. Here's the aid ratio. Here's the estimated aid. And this is the final cost for Highland. You have a one sheet in there that has that there. Two years to step into it. Couple of other highlights before I get to, or before I get to the timeline. One of the other components that we heard from superintendents, again, and you know, I'm sure Joel has talked to you. I have been at the table asking questions and my job is to find answers and viable solutions to those questions. I want this district, I want the eight school districts in Ulster County excited about this as an option for all of their students. One of those components was longevity, right? So we are now looking at a 20-year lease with a commissioner-approved 10-year extension. And then our terms in our lease, which would allow us, right, for the same terms after that 30 years. So we're looking at 60 years embedded in, again, language in the lease. Another component that the superintendents were adamant about was not just having our attorneys review the lease. So when the lease has been reviewed by our attorneys, ensuring that that lease gets into the superintendent's hands to have your district council review it as well. Again, I want more, the more eyes, the better. Again, I'm not trying to hide anything. I want those questions answered so that we're setting ourselves up for success with this particular project. Again, questions came up, what happens if the property was going to transfer ownership or sale? So first, right, of purchase, those type of items that would be inherent in the lease. And again, I don't have a copy here, so... But all of those items, many of them you'll see in the Q and A, would be embedded in the lease. So the timeline, just about wrapped up here. I started September '23. Really, that was kind of the deep dive into this project, although there was work prior. Ultimately, we would be looking to start our construction in September '24 with a year window, bringing us into September '25. Our goal, our hope, not our hope, but our start date for the new tech center would be that September '25 with a summer move-in date. We've identified two or three other Voces, which have moved career and technical centers. And so companies that do that type of moving, we've got, you know, conversations with those folks going on. Something else that happens here that was problematic for us in our current capital project, which was the renovation happening at Career and Tech while Career and Tech was happening. You all know capital projects are difficult in traditional school settings. We can't move the welding and manufacturing lab over here to do it. So we were looking at construction during the evening, swing shifts, small pockets of time in the summer. That type of work is more expensive. We'll now be vacated and we'll be able to get into Career and Tech, no students, and do that work. I do have another slide that I want to show you quickly just at the end, because this has come up. How does this impact our current capital project? It doesn't. Capital projects and leases are two totally different things. When you look at the scope of work for this Port Ewan facility, which we own, which we have to do regardless of what's there, HVAC, adjustable fire systems, like that work has to be done no matter what's going to go in there. So all of the original items in the capital project that was voted on by the Highland Board, that stands. The only piece that we switch out of the capital project that was voted on in '21, there was about $1.3 million that was allocated to doing some interior changes. They were going to open up a corridor to create more of a community space. We won't do that. We'll use that $1.3 million towards the retrofit of the special ed facility there. And I'll just say that as we're thinking about that building, the idea isn't to create the, how we think about the kind of outdated model of special ed delivery. Our hope is to keep some of the tech infrastructure in that facility. So not 26 different career clusters, but four labs that are tied more into the economic development areas, so hospitality, the building arts, and begin to really back map from our tech center, actually from the industry folks. Because that's really who we want to ask, right? Asking the industry folks, what do you really want to see when a student walks in or somebody walks into your place of work? And map those skills back so that we're preparing students for who's accepting them. And map those skills into the special ed high school experience so that those students are more prepared to either go over as juniors and seniors to our tech center or just towards a life skill type fashion or trajectory. We need to change how we're thinking about the delivery of career and tech. It's an outdated model. This gives us an opportunity to create a future-focused career and tech center. And we need to rethink how we deliver education for our most complex students, who have often been our most marginalized students. That's what we want to design for in this project. So I apologize. I know it's a lot of information. But I'll take some questions or thoughts that you all may have. And if I can answer it, I'll answer it. And if I can't, I have homework.
I'll start. I've been a big proponent here in our district of career and technical. I think Sue can relate to that. And history repeats itself. 30 or 40 years ago, most of your school district had shop, had metal, had auto repair, had pathology, had all that stuff. As things progressed, districts and state ed pushing more for college readiness. Now we're on the flip side of that. I've been in the building trades for 50 years. And when I first started, there were craft people. Now, as time has progressed, those individuals are no longer there. And the younger generation are not getting involved in the trades. And we're suffering. We're suffering big time throughout the state and probably throughout the country. But I'm excited about the project. On the flip side, I think I have some questions regarding how everything was put together. Number one, what can you tell me about National Resources? Are they a viable company? I mean, are they going to be there for the next 20 years? Are they going to be there for the next 30 years? What happens when they're not there? I know there's going to be language in the lease, but that's what ifs.
Right, sure. Yeah, so again, I don't work for National Resources. Another option is at some point, again, if folks want to hear from them. But I'll tell you why, outside of just regular developer, I have more confidence in National Resources. Their current work with the Yorktown school districts, there are developers who are creating schools and partnering with schools. Their work at the other I Park, at Beacon Waterfront, they're developing... Their work at the other I-Park, uh, at Beacon Waterfront, uh, they're developing property, uh, not just in strip mall fashion, but around, uh, a vision of a particular community. So I believe in these conversations, again, they're a developer. So, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not pretending that they're not. But I do believe that, that they get involved with projects that are tied into that, in, in, into that vision. Um, again, I don't have all of their, uh, financial information with me. Um, our financial advisors, uh, as well as, uh, the, the folks at SCD when we've, when we've had those conversations. They, they have, they have a business model and, and the backing that, um, I, I feel, I feel comfortable and confident, uh, with, with moving forward. The other piece is the willingness for them to invest $10 million of their own funding into it. I wanted skin in the game, uh, I didn't want it to be, uh, just a pure lease. Uh, that move gave tremendous confidence, and, and again, throughout, throughout the, the conversations, basically what they, you know, what they've, what they've said, and any, any feedback that I've brought from superintendents to them, I'd like to see this in a letter of intent, which in turn would become a lease. Let's talk about this language, great, let's get, let's get that in. Again, I think they, um, they really understand the power of BOSIs and in turn the eight districts, uh, as, as part of this particular community.
Yeah, usually when you have these cooperatives, you know, $10 million, and I know it's a national company, but that's a significant amount, amount of investment. Usually these cooperatives are, come together for a long-term solution. And, uh, I'll tell you, I'm real excited about it. I think it takes advantage of space that's already there. Putting our, our students or the county students in touch with professionals just a hallway away, sky's the limit. And this cost, your truck might have been more. It's the cost of a truck, guys, per year, give me a break. It's a no-brainer in my book.
How much, uh, input would BOSIs have on that $10 million build-out?
So, they have a full, they have a full-time, uh, architectural team, um, building in Kingston versus building for SED code. Two different, well, you know, two different, two different worlds. Uh, and so, we have, uh, we have, uh, both LAN and Palumbo as kind of consultants to the project, as well as SED. We met, um, with the, and, and the NYSED, uh, kind of planning and legal team. And, um, they were very, very happy that we engaged them in early discussions. And so things like, um, you know, uh, you know, in terms of the, the actual space design, um, that's, that's, we're going to be at the table. Um, you know, we want, I want teacher voice, I want industry partner voice, uh, I want student voice, uh, all of those, those components there as we design. Uh, and, and I think what we're really looking at is more flexibility, more open space. So that, you know, portions can be, uh, flipped, uh, for a particular project. So we have an industry who wants us to build X. You know, we can turn this portion of it and bring fashion and culinary and this into this particular area. So those siloed 26 career clusters are an outdated model. There's some universal skillsets that we want to be able to foster there. And then things like, um, you know, can a, you know, can a school be located next to a brewery? Uh, one of the other components, not that, that, I'm not sure if they're planning on a brewery, but throwing that out there, other, other types of, of industry. There's a facilities planning, a process that will have language in the lease, which will say prior to a new industry coming into I-Park or proximate to the school, we'll have the ability to send up to the review team to ensure that we're meeting safety standards. So again,
That a marijuana dispensary doesn't open up across the street.
Right, you know, or, or it might be, okay, that, that's, that's actually allowed, great, but it's not our preference. Like, you know, so, but again, all of those checks and balances to ensure that number one, like everybody here, safety is first. And then the experience and what students can access, uh, is, is next. Uh, but, but it is, it is, it is exciting for those reasons. The proximity to industry of a lot of students who, um, can't access internships, uh, because of transportation and geography. Now all of a sudden, we have the ability onsite, uh, for those students to be able to access this. It doesn't mean we're going to limit our, our integration with just the I-Park folks. That hub will really be the kind of branches to reach out to all of, uh, you know, our work with Hal King and the Council of Industry. He's got folks all over, so it would just be, again, that hub creating that kind of single-point entry.
You said you'd want all those players to be able to be at the table, but final decision would be from BOSIs, I'm assuming?
Yes.
In terms of design?
Yes, so I know that the county government is far, uh, is further ahead than us. Uh, I, I believe we'll, we'll see a, a lease being signed, uh, in the next, uh, week or two, uh, from them. And, um, you know, I've been at the table with the county exec, uh, just looking at where they're thinking and, and, and how it would be proximate, uh, to us. Um, and they hired their own architect and designed out their own space. And I, the, uh, National Resources is kind of building it to, to spec for, for them. And obviously going back and, and having conversations, but the design is, um, uh, is, is, is ultimately, uh, with great input. Um, and we're not going to endorse things that aren't going to work for, for a school.
Far as, um, being environmentally safe for the facility, because I know it was built back in the 50s, 40s and 50s. Has that all been considered? Will that be handled appropriately? Because I know school districts, we have to do, you know, take care of hazardous materials.
Yep.
Is that all going to be?
So all their remed-
Safety of the students and stuff?
Yeah, all their remediation efforts, uh, will go up to facilities, uh, things that have already been done. And then obviously moving forward, uh, as we look in, into the space, again, not my area of expertise, but I know it needs to happen. Um, and so that's where we'll engage with our architectural firm and building firm and NYSED. What SED has said is, when we come to agreement on kind of the space plan and renovation plan, and they will take a look at it, and they will sign off, uh, their intent to issue a lease, uh, or approval for a lease of school, so long as we build to whatever we've sent up there. And so they've offered the opportunity to come in at pulse points, so that we don't get too far ahead. Uh, but yes, all of those checks will be in, no different than if we were, if Highland was looking at a new facility in, uh, to build a school on a particular land, right? They'd look at what's next to it, what's been there, we've got to go through the same, same process.
Yes, that leads me into the question, what other sites and other options did BOSIs consider prior to looking at this lease agreement?
So, so again, there, you know, we looked at, first of all, elem-, you know, other schools coming online. Similar to, uh, Anna Divine, similar to Mount Marion. We know that there's a potential for a, a school to be coming online, uh, in the Antioch School District. The geography isn't ideal, doesn't mean down the line, it wouldn't be something as we look at increased needs, but it didn't meet this, this particular needs. Uh, we did, um, we did kind of engage in, um, you know, a, a search for, I mean, at one point, we looked at property off of 9W, which was the old, um, West Park campus that, that has been sold. Uh, there isn't, there isn't much out there that does what this does for both sides. And when we began to look at, uh, when we, when we, when we look at, uh, cost for a new career and tech building, we're talking 80 to 90 million dollars. Um, and so, that's, that's, that's a way different financial picture going out for, uh, 80 to 90 million dollars in this versus, again, as you look at, you know, this particular after-age cost, uh, each, each year, the, the, the capital project of that nature is going to be far more significant than that. So, um, you know, it was, we, we didn't, we didn't believe that there was an, another viable, uh, property, uh, that offered, uh, first the physical layout, but also the tie to the vision, right? I mean, building a building is one thing, uh, but, but, but locating a school, um, we, we really, you know, I, I actually had, uh, email exchange, uh, last week with the commissioner. And, uh, shared some of this content here that, that you all have. Uh, general rule, if it's going to hit the press, commissioner likes to know. Um, and so, the Freeman did a cover of Kingston's, uh, meeting, and so I sent that up and some information. And there's, there's a lot of work at state level, uh, around P20, so preschool through, through, through grade 20 or workforce. And there's a, a lot of talk about how you get this type of synergy. Um, I believe Ulster County, our eight districts and BOSIs are going to have the model, uh, for what a county can look like when it provides pathways for all students in this. This is, I believe, will situate us as a county, again, our programs that are amazing, our extensions on both special ed and career and tech side, to really be a lighthouse for the state and beyond. I don't think there's another viable option that matches this from an economic or service delivery standpoint.
No, I, I agree, far the impact that'll have on, on students of the eight component districts. I look at some of these things from an economic standpoint, and I believe your aid ratio for BOSIs is similar to school districts. So if you're considering a 80 to 90 million dollar project, if BOSIs was to build and own, and you receive that 58%, I mean, you're cutting that 80 to 90 million down to 40 to 45 million dollars, which is, in today's day and age, a really good bang for your buck to have a standalone building that Ulster County BOSIs owns. I know, like you said earlier, Orange County bought Horton Hospital and renovated that. Duchess County BOSIs has a, a site there where they expanded just recently. Uh, I'm just surprised that you don't have a piece of property or property in, within centralized location that we can purchase and build that complex, which you wouldn't have to have a lease agreement, wouldn't have to worry about what happens for an extension, what happens if this goes wrong, that goes wrong, all that has to be in. This is a, a piece of property and an infrastructure that we all own, the eight component district.
We, we, we- I appreciate that perspective, but wherever that property is, it's not going to be alongside businesses that are doing these various industries, where part of the excitement of this is it's right in Kingston alongside businesses that exist that are providing innovation to the county, is that not accurate? I mean, so yeah, you could go out and buy some farmland and stuff, transportation, you know, transportation is everybody's worst enemy right now. You know, I understand that, but you're central.
We looked at West Park, we looked at Kingston, um, uh, Kingston Catholic, I believe, which was for sale. You know, there wasn't, you know, there's been, you know, I've been, been, you know, tour, touring the properties in the central area for some time. There hasn't been anything that has been, uh, remotely, uh, as central, um, and as viable as, as this.
Anybody else have any?
Well, I just, my one concern, of course, is the capital project, and I think you've, you've addressed that issue. I just want to make sure we weren't misrepresenting what that vote was about. The other, these are strictly leasing costs, so my other question was, uh, equipment and modernization. I, I know there's regular budgets for that, but given that you're going into a new space, are we going to be looking at an increased cost of, of, uh, adjusting the facility for the actual career and technical, as it moves into that space?
No, so two sides of the house. One, let's start with special ed in terms of building into that space. Special ed as numbers, uh, increase embedded in those tuitions are program expansion and operational cost. No, we didn't see, you know, when, when we opened Anna Divine, uh, we have, uh, eight students who are going to be in an elementary classroom. That tuition is what pays for the teacher and that specialized equipment, et cetera, so that kind of standalone. So the, the, the improvement in, uh, in, um, and equipment, et cetera, for the special ed move is inherent in program growth. So that's that side. For career and tech, right, well, we, we will look through and determine, uh, what equipment is outdated, uh, what equipment, uh, we want to bring over, and where we want to purchase new. Uh, we have, one of our only reserve funds is our career and tech that we're legally allowed to have, is our equipment reserve fund for career and tech, uh, that we add into, and so, uh, that, that will fund, uh, the needed equipment as we look out. There's another piece that we're talking about as well, and I don't have the answers right now. But much like our manufacturing lab, which is industry standard, and, and the machine equipment is, uh, provided by Haas Manufacturing. Um, Ulster County Community College comes over to use our equipment. I, I have charged both our grants department and our leadership team to begin to think about who are the other lead manufacturers in the industry standard. So for instance, for our culinary, um, is it a particular oven, uh, company that, that makes ovens? Is it the Culinary Institute of America? Who can endorse this lab, uh, you know, and sponsor this lab, uh, to purchase, uh, uh, you know, help purchase equipment? Again, for cosmetology, is it, uh, some of the lead manufacturers in, uh, in cosmetology, um, uh, you know, you know? There's no reason why we can't have, uh, endorsed labs and subsidize some of that equipment, uh, purchasing.
I was hoping you'd go in that direction, yeah, I think that's
Yeah.
A sensible way. There's obviously, there's going to be an increase across, uh, cost of materials.
Right.
You're expanding your-
We, we have no intention to come back to the eight districts and say, now we need a $5 million, so we need new equipment. That is not how we plan to fund this.
And you mentioned that they, uh, you would be, uh, adjusting some of your programs in tune with, like Mike was saying, local, uh, how much of a save will they have in the actual, uh, I know, you, you, the idea is to help train them for immediate careers that would, would benefit both the student and, and the local, uh, facility or business. But, uh, exactly how much of a, a save would you allow them?
So, so I think, you know, the, the process which has kind of ebbed and flowed over the years that, that, uh, I believe is critical is around this idea of steering committee. When we go for program reapprovals, and this is really some of the difference between when we were talking about kind of shop at high school, which is a one-period class, and amazing, I advocated to have shop every year from 9, 10, 11, and 12, because I was told I couldn't go to career and tech, because it wasn't for me. But, but when we talk about half-day, uh, fully-integrated, uh, career and technical education, often with, uh, career endorsements or technical endorsements or credentials in a particular area, um, there's a, there's, there's a process that we have to have steering committees. So local industry coming together around a particular career cluster to talk about, again, what are the relevant skills of today, tomorrow, and beyond? And then for us to begin to back map those and show those, no different than English teachers have to map out 10th grade standards. Part of the career and technical process, which I believe there is room to grow, one of my, uh, since I've gotten here, one of my areas of passion is to ensure that we have a robust steering committee process, so that our work each day is informed by industry. So, and, and then there's all of the ways in which industry can participate in the experience. So, you know, Rich Crowe's Viking Industries coming in, meeting with 15 students to say, hey, here's a problem we have in Viking, I want you all to think about how you want to solve that. And they're working on real problems and presenting back, right? That's a kind of workplace learning challenge model, internships, externships, um, and things like that. So, so I, I believe that the core of what is taught has to be driven by, 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 by real folks in industry.
Just have a quick question, not so much based on the building or the lease, but just in terms of some of the numbers you had thrown out in terms of, you know, $7 million, um, of funding really goes outside the county to support some of our students' needs. But you'd also said that, um, BOSIs supports like 26 districts that are outside of our component districts. So that kind of probably, I'm assuming, offsets that money going out. But really, just a quick question, just because I'm not familiar with it. Are students in our component districts placed first before we're bringing in students from outside the districts?
So, so when we open, I mean, so each year, the, the cycle of intake for, for special ed, not first, it's really driven by, by law. So special ed, least restrictive environment, right? We, 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 we must do our best to educate a child in the least restrictive environment. So, regular classroom, co-taught classroom, 811 in district, BOSIs placement of your BOSIs, and then added district BOSIs placement, so that's what we try to maintain. Now, each year, our special ed folks, again, work with your special ed folks to understand, who do you have? Who's coming, you know, who do you think, who do you anticipate X? And yes, I guess the short answer is, our goal is always to place, uh, Ulster County students with IEPs in our particular programs. In 2018, um, you know, I, I did a, I did a kind of analysis of those numbers, that, the, the students with IEPs who, uh, were, were leaving our county. The number was around, it was what, $7.2 million as well. That was the nexus for opening Atene Divine. As we looked at that seven million dollars, there were two areas in 2018 which emerged. Elementary students, most of them with autism diagnosis, some of them with management needs or outward-facing kind of expression or superpowers, as we like to say. And the other population was students with severe disability. Those are two big pockets. We, because the, the delivery, both kind of for, for academic, but also for social emotional support for students with disabilities, was a much larger venture. And we also didn't have, we didn't believe that we had the space across one building and two buildings to be able to co-locate certain programs. It's not just about opening another classroom. You can't have an elementary's classroom here for students who are non-verbal with autism and put a classroom next to it for students who express themselves physically. It's a different, it's a different approach. And so we need to have that, those, through those four buildings, we'll be able to flex those out. When we opened Atene Divine, that number of seven point two million dollars that we're exporting dropped down to about four and a half million. So we're able to decrease. Students who are sent out of county don't always return, especially if a student is being successful. Generally, the committee on special ed won't just pull them out because there's a new program. But, but if you look at the trend data, there were, there were just as many students kind of coming up and entering. And so that's the population that we brought into Atene Divine. We opened Down to Divine, it was, it holds about ninety students, we opened it with about thirty-five or forty students. Within eighteen to twenty months, we were at capacity. But yes, our goal is always to place our, our, our Ulster County Component District students in our special ed programs first.
Thank you.
You mentioned a twenty-year lease, is that roughly two percent increase annually stipulated in the lease for the twenty years?
I, I don't have, again, we don't have that draft of, of the language, I would imagine that's typical for that, for that, two, two percent.
Oh, I've seen them go for five years and then all of a sudden jump on the sixth.
Right, right. I'm not, not looking for any balloons at, at, you know, we want stability across. You know, two percent on this particular number is something that our superintendents and business officials can project out and build for. I don't wanna create balloons down, we don't, we don't know what the fiscal picture is gonna be five years from now.
That's still a work in progress, developing that lease and, and kind of formalizing what the annual increases are gonna be.
Yeah, so we have a
Assuming, you're assuming right now at two percent.
Right.
That's what that's based on, so that could
So we have a letter of intent that was reviewed for, by our council, again, they're not binding, but that would become the, the first iteration of the lease, and so
I just wanted to make sure that communicates forward to the twenty years, because it's nice to say we have a twenty-year lease.
Right.
Or an option for thirty years, but if the rates don't hold for the twenty to thirty years, then
No, they, you know, longevity and stability. So, again, I appreciate you on a snowy evening having me out, and, and thank you to Sue and Holly, both of you know.
Do you have a couple more of these?
I was just gonna ask the same.
Thanks for being bold enough to come out.
So really, as you, as you all are, we should get him over here. Again, as, as we begin to get into more of the program development, I told Joel, told the other superintendents, happy to, again, share information, I will be sharing information with Joel. But if, if four months from now, there's some developments and you want me to come back and have a discussion about like some of the program developments, I'm happy to, I'm happy to do that and, and partner with you all as, as we move forward. And certainly, if there are more questions that come up as you begin to think and process, share those with Joel. He'll get them to me, I will, myself and team will, will, will get answers and solutions, and we'll keep working it till, till it's right.
Yeah, I think, I think from the board's standpoint, I might be speaking out of turn here, but I think there's two pieces to it. We're, we're excited about the, the project, number one, that's just gonna allow our, our students more opportunities. But then, there's also the other piece of it as far as this financial aspect of it and how it affects the district.
Of course.
So I, I think those two, you know, the, probably the financial is the one that's unknown right now. The other end of it, as far as the opportunities that this presents, are out there. But we, we really gotta know the financial, and I guess, you know, we're, we're one district, we're, you know, one of eight that's gonna speak out, and I know you said earlier on in your conversation that the BOSEs board has the final say on lease, so it doesn't really come back to the district. We can give our input, but BOSEs board has the final say.
Right. And, yeah.
Hopefully, they, they look at, you know, the concerns of various districts, if they do have that financial piece of it, because that's big.
Absolutely, and, and ultimately, you know, at, at the end, at the end of the day, you know, the BOSEs board is the one who votes on a lease. But we wouldn't even be having this discussion if I haven't, hadn't been partnering with Joel and the other seven superintendents about, this is a viable option. And so, again, you know, the, these are the numbers we are going with, and as we sharpen the pencils and turn it into ink, and it's reality, again, I'm not bringing a lease to the BOSEs board until the eight superintendents have taken a look at that lease, have had the opportunity to vet that with their council. Fortunately, we don't have eight districts with eight separate school councils, so we get a little economy of scale there.
We're gonna let one of the other districts
Yeah. We'll make, we'll make sure, yeah, we'll make sure you go second. But again, you know, I want folks feeling good and excited about this as an opportunity, both for students and the county, as well as the economics. That's really, doesn't work for me, it doesn't work for you any other way. That's why I'm, I'm here having that discussion with you all.
Any other questions, guys? Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for Sue and Holly coming out also. Be careful over there, a maple
I know, it's a little, little slippery up there.
I'm gonna exit, Joel, you have another presentation?
Up next. Thank you.
Thank you. See you on text for a couple of hours later?
Yeah.
Oh, you're right.
I gotta catch, I gotta catch up on, everybody's buzzing about freezing roads tomorrow already. Anyway, thank you all, take care.
You can weigh in on my behalf, and I'll get back to them after I'm done.
Yeah, that's gonna go over well. I'll let you, I'll let you write first.
All right.
Have a good one, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, so doesn't it feel like we just did this?
Just before you start off, I just want the board, Tiffany Rizzo is the new town liaison, the town board to the school district. So she's gonna be sitting through these boring meetings for four years.
Four years.
Are they boring sometimes?
What, bored meetings? Not anymore. Sitting up here, I don't find, when I sat out there, I didn't know what you were talking about, yes.
Now he tells us our true feelings.
Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you so much, I look forward to working with you.
And thank you for being here.
Yeah, I didn't wanna be rude, but it's nice to have you.
It's a nice touch.
All right, so the first two presentations that we do in January and February are gonna talk about where our revenue is coming from. So in January, we talk about the history of the tax levy and the, the tax levy formula. So similar to the presentations in the past, although we've updated the slideshow presentations now, so you don't have the blue fuzzy background anymore, is our overview of the tax levy limit formula. So we're now in our thirteenth year of it, and the formula basically has different parts that come from different places and what us as a district actually contribute to. So part of the formula is the tax base growth factor. This year for Highland is one point zero one, or one point zero one zero five percent, which is actually down from last year. Our payments in lieu of taxes, that's pilots. Those are agreements that are reached with businesses in the county. You'll see on the next slide, it's pretty much similar to last year. The allowable growth factor, so this is where we hear the two percent cap. So the two percent cap isn't the percentage we can go up, it's this two percent cap here. So we just found out about this on Friday, that for our fiscal year, it will remain at two percent and not less, so we can use that in our equation. We have exclusion amounts, again, our tort judgments, ERS, TRS are typically at zero, our capital levy. Those are exclusions that we can have from our capital projects. So you'll see that that number also has increased from last year as well. All of those pieces enter into our formula, which gives us what we can increase in our tax levy limit. So highlighted here from last year are what our prior tax levy was, so this is how the formula goes. So in 2023, our tax levy was the thirty million six three six seven five two. We carry it up to the previous year. And as I stated, last year, our tax base growth factor was one point zero one five one, which is higher than it is this year. Last year, we also had, were able to go up to two percent. Our capital tax levy for last year was at one point five million and change. We didn't have any TRS or ERS exclusions, which brought our total increase for the levy to make it at thirty-one million nine one four zero four two, which gave us an increase of four point one seven percent last year. So again, that two percent cap is the allowable growth factor. So that has nothing to do about the increase from year to year on the tax levy. So that formula for this year, we did an estimate for 2025, based on the fact that on the February board meeting, which I believe is the thirteenth, we will be approving, well, the board will be approving this for the March first approval rate. And this year, I had highlighted the two percent, because as of Friday, we didn't know yet. But pretty much, our tax, our pilots are around the same at fifty-two thousand. Like I said, that growth factor is down a little bit from last year. And our capital tax levies have gone up from one point five to one point seven because of the capital projects that we have coming up, which then gives us an allowable increase of three point five one percent, which is still, it brings us a little bit less than last year's increase. But it's important to understand, this year, the majority of our revenue increase is going to come from our tax levy, because last year, we did reach full foundation aid. So it is unclear at this point in time how much that increase is actually going to be. So this is, although it is estimated, it's pretty close to what you'll be voting on for next month. But again, before we do that, I'll have the presentation to give you the numbers that I'll be submitting prior to that.
So while, so this comes in for a rollover budget, right, as we see it now? And whether we wanna lower it or increase it, that's what we adopt in a month?
So yes, if you wanna go, this brings us as high as we can go without going over the cap. So that's what this is. When we hear the Donigan presentation, which was supposed to be tonight, but postponed until February, you'll see why I would agree with them, why we continuously go to the cap instead of going less just with the increase, the not-so-high increases that we are seeing on the aid side.
The last couple of years, the increase was kind of offset with foundation aid coming in. Aside that, you know, you're looking at, what, a thousand dollars per hundred thousand?
So this is probably about one million, a little bit over, of an increase. And we had about one point two in foundation aid, we're maybe looking at, on a
Okay.
Couple hundred thousand, if we get an increase at all. So, but again, all of this, once we listen to the five-year plan and all of those estimates too,
Yeah, we'll have more data.
More information on that.
So that three point, is it three point five?
Three point five one.
Five one.
So that's essentially what people would refer to as our two percent.
Right?
Because that's what, that's what you can increase without a supermajority.
That's correct.
So because this is the two percent that we're talking about. So if you go, so in 2022, they didn't, the state didn't allow you to go to that two percent. They went lower than that. So if you wanted to go higher, then that's when you would go over the two percent. So this is the growth factor, the two percent that you're thinking, that when the public hears, they tend to think that, how can you do that? This is three point five one, you're going over the two percent. That's not, in fact, what we're doing, we're going right to the two percent cap.
With the allowable exclusions, you know, inclusions that are allowed, yeah.
So the two percent is part of the formula, it's not the end-all, be-all.
Is there any possibility of the foundation aid being reduced?
I don't, it shouldn't be reduced, we should get what we have always gotten, but again,
I'm just putting it out there in case you Any indicators? There, there hasn't been any at this point.
Yeah.
But going back to the Going back to the two percent, I would say, in the last couple of years, there, there's been a concerted effort to try to distinguish what two percent actually meant as the growth factor rather than that other number. So I think people are getting it, they're understanding it a little bit better.
Yeah, which is why I like to talk about the formula, so that way it, you know, gives a reminder that it's just part of it, it's not the whole.
That is a big target, and whether or not we pierce the cap, and whether or not we
Right, yeah.
That's a huge influence.
So right now, this is not piercing the cap, this is going to our allowable max. And again, the governor usually releases the executive budget proposed numbers. I saw something about she was supposed to be on at ten-thirty today, but I don't know if that actually ended up happening. February thirteenth is our next board meeting, where the presentation will be on state aid and that revenue side of the equation that we'll be getting in. And then March first is the deadline to submit that calculation to the tax, for the tax levy limit. So, which would be on February thirteenth, is where we would adopt it at that point, so it could be submitted on the first.
The date we have to adopt our budget somewhere is in March, right?
It's April.
It's April, yes.
First week in April or April.
It is. April sixteenth.
Sixteenth, yeah. We don't have the date in there, but it's gotta be real close.
Yeah, it's, it's no later than four twenty-one, so on the sixteenth, we'll be doing, we'll be able to do that. So, and the planning stages, I, I have already spoken with the building principals and the directors to try to get an idea of any needs that they would like for the upcoming school year. Again, with the increases in revenue not as high as last year, that might mean we need to make choices later on during this process. But again, once we have more of those details, we'll be able to get into the majority of that. If anybody have any questions, we wanted to try to make this short for us tonight.
Thank you, Lindsay. Moving forward, we have our, well, I can open the meeting up for public comment, I think we have public comment. We'll close public comment.
Will often be the question, just to
Our consent items are from EA one to D point five. Again, like usual, if you wanna pull something out, need explanation. Again, like usual, uh, if you want to pull something out, need, uh, explanation. Make sure Joel or Lindsay can do that.
I'm ready to make a motion. Motion to accept the
Motion by Mike, second by Heather. Any further discussion?
I think the only discussion was, uh, uh, the girls varsity flag football. And when we introduced that program, there was a question of sustainability. Do we have a replacement coach for that?
Not yet. The posting ends on Thursday. That's for the, uh, internal folks. If we don't have a coach from that, then it'll open up to those outside of the bargaining unit.
Thank you.
The hope is that we would have that in place by the February 13th meeting.
Very good. Any, any other questions or concerns?
Just a quick question in terms of, um, retirements. Well, is that, did that date change? Is it February 1st notification?
February 1st, but also we, there's a, there's a caveat in there. If you're gonna go on your birthday, you can do it up to, I believe it's five months prior. So this is, this is the typical one that would, February 1st for the
This, well, okay.
Yeah.
So none others that we expect?
None other, well, not that we don't expect, but this is all that we've gotten at this point. There may be others, there are others that look like they're in there, whether they take that opportunity or not, that is to be seen, but we could approve those at the February 13th meeting.
Okay, thank you.
As long as they're in by February 1st.
Oh, true, yep, okay.
That's right.
Okay, we have a motion by Mike, second by Heather. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Any abstentions? So Carrie.
So I mentioned earlier, if there were any questions on any of the directors' reports, I would get those, uh, answers for you for my Friday update, but if anyone wants to make those, uh, questions public, you can ask them now and I'll make sure that I get them for you. Or if you are looking through the reports and you want to get something to me before the, uh, tomorrow, Thursday, I'll make sure they're in there for Friday.
Okay.
And then in an effort to keep things brief, just, uh, oh, my voice just changed. Sorry about that. Um, I know I put it in my update, but, uh, just so that everyone's aware, capital project phase two is now out to bid with those bids due back on February 2nd at 3:00 PM, so that the board can look to award those bids at the February 13th meeting. Um, this coming Thursday, we have our annual rock concert at the high school at 6:30. Next week is regents week here at the high school, Tuesday to Friday, January 23rd to the 26th. And just something exciting that Bill actually will speak more to at the next meeting. Uh, the panorama survey went out again and we have an increase in parental responses this year. Last year, we were at 190, it's up to 297. So he's just getting that data back now. He'll be looking at it and reviewing it with, um, the district level administrators, but also with the direct committee, because some of those questions were targeted toward the work that they were doing. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions for the superintendent? Okay, under Board of Education, New Business, uh, the overnight trip varsity softball, and this is for next year, 2025.
Correct.
Uh, being resolved, the Board of Education fund recommendation, the superintendent approves the following overnight high school student trip as follows. Varsity softball spring training to Orlando, Florida at the Wide World of Sports Disney, April 12th, 2025 to April 19th, 2025. Number of attendees, 16 to 18 players, six chaperones. They're doing an ongoing fundraiser.
I don't, sorry, not to interrupt you, but I don't think that's, I don't think the Highland baseball booster is doing the fundraising.
I'm sorry?
I don't think the Highland baseball booster is gonna fund the softball.
Thank you, I will change.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just, I noticed that.
Thank you.
It's, I don't know if there is a booster for softball.
So it is the softball, right?
Okay, um, can I entertain a motion? Motion by Janine, second by Mike.
Just a quick question, six chaperones for 16 to 18 players is a lot. Is that, do they pay their own way or do we have to pay for chaperones?
Yeah, that was really just an estimate to be determined as, yes.
Thank you. It would be the coach, assistant coach, trainer and probably athletic director. That's what's going on the baseball.
That's what's going on baseball. And
I just took it from the baseball one.
The booster is funding for the
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? So Carrie.
Can I just go back, can I ask a little question? So our, um, school calendar has not been set yet, right? Is that expected to be during, uh, the break?
That's coming, we have BOC's, BOC's does it first.
Okay.
So that'll probably be in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
When we generated the agenda, uh, back on Thursday or Friday, we had put the cell phone usage discussion in there because we had charged the administrators that come back with some, some data. And, um, being that they're not here tonight, so we don't have that information. Do you want to continue discussion now or just wait until we get all that information and?
You know, I just wanted to just make three points that I, I think it's in our court. I agree with a lot of what Camille said. So just to share some points on this and we can either talk about it or talk about, you know, we're probably gonna talk about it in the future too. I'm prepared to support a policy that includes no cellphone zones and acceptable use zones, so red versus green, whatever you want to talk about. Uh, it should be at that point, the only device used in classrooms would be the school issued device. So a zero cellphone policy in classrooms, no matter what they are. And teachers would need to, you know, if, if there's teachers out there looking at, you know, they're, they're using cellphone apps and stuff, they just gotta look for another equivalent under the Google house or, you know, there's lots of apps and programs out there that could be brought onto the student devices. So those are just my three points.
Anyone else have any comments?
I'll look forward to the dialogue. I want to hear the dialogue from the administrators, but I do think whichever way it goes, I want to make sure we have, um, policies in place to give our policies teeth. So there's just not an ambiguous policy that's out there. So that whatever we do decide as, as a district, that, uh, we have the infrastructure, the scaffolding in place to make sure that those policies are followed, you know, so the teachers know that they'll be followed, so the administrators have a means of following them. Want to make sure that we don't just make an edict and, and not create the structure to support it.
Okay, anyone else? All right, so we'll continue the discussion in our February 13th meeting. Uh, the miscellaneous, uh, School Board Association Conference, February 2nd, 2024, virtual. And the lobby day, February 7th, up in Albany. And the Elster County School Boards Association, um, the January 25th meeting, uh, please RSVP if you're going.
Do you, I would like to let them know. Let me know by tomorrow. The 25th meeting, that's the one with the legislatures, legislatures, so, um, they really need to know that answer. Yes.
I'm not around next week.
I'm not around.
Okay, all right, thank you. I believe Tom said that he was gonna go. I'm here if I was him. Somebody.
Yep.
Okay, uh, Welcome. Yeah, welcome to the meeting up to public comment. Okay, uh, I want to thank everyone for coming out in this kind of weather, appreciate it. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Janine, second by Heather. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? So Carrie. Thank you.